You have any idea whether this is made in front of the nation or Twitter?
That's what I presented.
That's what they did?
I asked me to respond to what I want.
No, I think that's what he just did.
That's what I'm saying.
I was trying to go.
I think the person just reported on the past.
I didn't know that. I didn't know that. In the water storage project, Charlie is still working on the water going to add and drain money. If we can do it without raising the rate, then the number of guys is ready. As the Senator said, it's ready for the same, but we'll be ready in very near future.
I'll have it due the first part of next week. It's good to give them the good bill for this. Sheriff Council, if there is any question.
It's good for this money.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Did we not get the extension from DNR on the coordination?
We never even got it. Now, the cable's got two years for completion. We started on it. We worked on it. We got two years for data completion. So we're not thrilled with it.
When I talked to him, he said he'd stop for an extension.
We don't.
When I talked to, um, to Matt, DNR, just that is fair with this.
I don't know. I've been talking to Matt. I haven't, I haven't spoken. And I'm over in the water service. I've never even spoken. I did it one reason one time because I was there. I don't, I don't have no reason to talk to you. I don't know. Anybody's not over the service department or water department would.
Well, and I'm thinking too, if that information should be made available to the board.
When you got information, we will. You gotta copy that. That you should have. The one that you just folded, that you wanted to level or sample or whatever.
I don't have it because I was trying to get that one in, um, the one that, that Mr. Ray just purchased in DNR. And knowing who's getting it here, I have permission from DNR to get it. So I say there's usually why I should have to take it.
Somebody really has to.
Well, I don't know why I'm there except for better place for a window. Oh, a couple times today, but didn't she say yesterday she was at mine? Why not?
Yes. I've seen it several times. It's there. It's available.
Okay. The board really should have that information.
Well, the board knows about the new line, whatever they want it to say. But yeah, also they know at the bottom of that, it says we got two years for completion.
On the option line?
Yes.
Look, with line, compliance schedule was issued when we began to run the compliance and it was altered by risk of compliance that brought them out. And we reported that back to DNR and asked them to reconsider that and do a consent or a deed. The vertical part and the written part had to stay and be contacted.
You know, that's what we're with. I'm going to.
Because I'm there. I'm at the problem.
I'm pretty sure. He needs to move closer.
I can drive.
Again, for the state, you can get it home. We already got the other base ground. Nobody's sitting down in all the way. Well, that's why I was hoping. It's not for big problems.
Oh, yeah. So we lie off on a 59 dollars, not by the pound here.
Well, it's more than that.
There's a bill with the pound here, 230 dollars.
I don't think because of that, saying the board actually gets it much successful. I don't think you know, except being going out of business. So I need a motion where you reject both of them.
I agree with you.
Want to make a second on the paper? So if we do what the board agreed, I'll get things up on my log and let the driver recruit for our $6,000 when we pay the payment by payment. And that's what we agreed upon earlier, at earlier date. Well, if I don't get it done next week, I'll try that online and know. And if anybody don't got it out there, good. I don't really put on credit. They can be putting on credit if somebody don't got it. I don't, I don't do this with you. He does. What went wrong? The only thing that he does, maybe we're putting on credit for two days and two months and this. We're going after cases there. I ain't got my foot away because I don't know if I'm going to pay the cost of it. Actually, I think the car in the book, I had a little support company.
Mr. Mayor, I have a simple thing. Um, on the, on the, uh, I have, I have a question. I'm over in DNR standing just a moment more than I could have, but it's reported by me and I also heard it when I was talking to, to, um, Mrs. Beckett at one time, that there's a loud kind of roaring sound coming out of that. And someone said, well, that sounds like either transmission or your axle.
It's not transmission. It's not the old place car. That was the new place car. And it was an idler brand. It's been fixed.
Oh.
I fixed it. It's on garage and city. So they bought it as an idler brand.
Okay. Well, that's interesting. Something goes out with that and then we don't have a car.
We take this car. I mean, instead of idler brand, why? Uh, nobody's seen on the, uh, on the van, say, dude, I was going to put in and do it on myself. I didn't get around to it. I had too much going on in that. So I don't know what I'm going to do about it. Uh, I mean, we could travel. Somebody come to me this month ago and said, if we get ready to put them up for bid, they want to know about the animals, about the service truck animals, where you want them. And for the logic, I can't remember what. It was in the paper. I mean, but I thought it was approved during that. Luckily, he said it was him. I don't know what. So maybe you weren't getting around somebody, somebody will make an offer, I can run through the board or something. Should be moving to scrap site. If the system is scrap site, it's a lot of cracking work, like if I have a client about what's going on. No. Okay. Performance by the mayor. Last month, I made the performance when they were voting off. So then I made, yeah, all forms had to approve by board. And we didn't, didn't mind neglect because we didn't vote off. And then means that, and I felt surprised by this, Ted, it's borderline on deposition with him being over his son-in-law. And there's a lot of supervision going on in that. I mean, overtime and stuff like that should be okay. So slide is maybe the, Mr. You got the street, huh? So meaning to go back to 16th Street, I'm going to go back to the water and show a lot of the work. And then you got the, hard on winter.
Police and fire.
Police and fire. And I know she don't want it, but she got the animal control Diana. So I need a motion to 70, I guess. I would have voted that it was 70 for. Give a second.
I understand that.
All in favor?
Aye.
For both?
Aye.
So that's why you have to. I was actually projecting last month, so I didn't want to get wrong. We talked about this a year or two ago. We were talking about doing that and we said, pray it could be a problem. Reimbursement for dear Cameron, Frankie, oh, I'm going to ask you about this. I think, excuse me, I know, I think, uh, yeah.
Well, I didn't know about it, Mr. Mayor. And the other.
Let me explain.
Well, it wasn't on the agenda that was spoken on Sunday, it was spoken today. I know it shows on here, it's not on the, on the.
I don't know here what's on here. I know it's on here and it's legally on here. That's all I know. And I don't read it sometimes, but I do read this.
Well, we weren't given this until tonight, so I can't prove that it was on here other than, well, I did it on Sunday.
I can prove it was. It's put on there here. And then, then I'm going to explain to you. Back, and I know one had called me, I know exactly what I'm talking about. There was a, we were having a problem with a certain gentleman up there. We was in court trying to get an evening through the room. And rocks kept getting cut and the city kept getting blamed for it. So we set up a camera to see who was doing, Frankie says he knew where he'd get one, he got one. And I went and bought one. And we put a camera up and even climbed the tree and put my camera on that camera. So we figured if they seen it, they might start seeing it, but they wouldn't know it was two that were there, they didn't know it was two. Two odd that they put up in the store. Now, I ate my camera. I don't care. I thought it ran you this or that, but I paid for it. I can afford it, but Frankie can't. He got paid guys with a camera. And we were trying to do a service for the city. And I think we should reimburse him for it. But I don't want reimbursement for mine. I don't eat mine. The only one that, we got a picture on mine, they got the camera too, because that's the first picture there too. With Nancy. But it's a rich egg too. I don't know, is it here to build?
That's what you kind of broke on. Same kind of camera.
Uh, everything total hundred was 7814. So I have a motion to reimburse Frankie for the camera.
Make a motion that we can reimburse Frankie for the camera.
So, motion may stand on there.
Aye.
For both?
That's the.
Do you want to go up or down? Do you want to go up or down?
I'm going the way.
That's the easy way out, yes. So, okay. Hi, sir. And, and, Amanda, no.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Oh, yeah, a couple things. Well, I may have one call for you, um, for our, my dad is still in a high-risk ocean, kind of what I had in just the higher risk sort of part, part of the, higher exposure and two hundred and twenty-five. So that's all I got.
Okay. That, that, gotta tell you some money. My, my, I have two hundred thousand. Police department. And, and.
Um, I want to invite the board that the matter pertaining to Rose and Tony Marshall has been resolved and as of July 4th, the bus has been moved from their property. Um, I also want to say on behalf of the board, congratulations to Officer Mark Beckett for achieving, for achieving an outstanding rating of 100% to a recent audit, which was conducted with this department. This rating reflects the commitment and dedication to the residents of the City of St. Mary's. So thank you again for a job well done.
Do you have anything to report?
No, sir.
You don't have to turn around. I appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Yes, I don't have to do it right now, but if I could ask, um, through combination a couple things to Officer Beckett about, um, some tall needs and things that I have to tell you about.
Well, I just, we need to get with you 101 and.
Pardon?
I, I were just assuming, actually, we need to get with you 101. And then if you don't get that stat, then you report.
Okay. I would like to do that. If that's all right.
Have to take a lot of time and get the same thing done. If you have a problem with it.
No, I, I think that he'll take care of it.
Martin's duty.
I have nothing to report.
Treats? Thank you, glad to.
Okay. I have another to report.
I don't, I don't know anything more. We, I don't know where we at. Because we started by getting some asphalt, then we had the flood, then we've had everything. Uh, we got to get called back up on mowing and everything. I know we run behind with all this rain, but maybe in the next week or two, we can look at getting the asphalt and getting these kickbacks, the younger ones that are going. So with the water coming up and everything, we just, we're behind on everything, especially the mowing. And the mower broke down. Is it going now?
The mower's going now. I'm not, everybody's two weeks' years now.
Okay. So we just, we just started all the trimming and the mowing done. We only got one ride mower to go down. Way it's been raining three days now and you're behind. And it is going to, that's not the case. Now, you give a one or two or two, I haven't been like that yet. Go ahead.
Um, I was wondering, I noticed that there was some digging and, and water over the road. I know we got some spring down there. Is that, is that your problem? So with these, the street?
Was trying to, uh, it comes through the street, probably trying to burst the water going across the street into the ditch.
Oh, okay.
And the first time they went a long way and they were done in the ditch. I feel, feel to be sung on the other way, but I looked at the mower. We were working into the ditch, we're supposed to run.
So it's just ready.
That ditch used to go all the way up too now.
Okay. So it's just ready to run down with water and all?
Well, I don't know about those people, but when I wash my car, I hate to go through water going across the road. Right, that's why I mess it up when it's trying to go in the right direction. It should go in the ditch. It's only coming out, it's in 20 feet, the ditch running down 40 feet the other way coming out. It's supposed to be secure. The house is empty right now, it's in process.
Does, does the, does, um, does the city purchase the rock that was put in there?
No.
No?
Well, I mean, the ditch would be, there was no rock put in there. Oh, we just dug the dits, but like, we ain't put no rock over. And that's our bigger dream that you're talking about. We get the whole, where the ditch going, going to the main ditch. That's all we done. We didn't buy nothing, do nothing, spend nothing. We ain't really been legal, but it's on the right of there.
Oh.
But we didn't do it for spending money just laboring day with the ditch. Water, sure. Right here. He didn't go out. He didn't, I don't know why he didn't go out. He reported for this. Dennis, Dennis, what?
That's what's happening. Okay, real quick. Uh, June 12th, uh, June 12th, we had an inspection from DNR on our, uh, distribution system. And, uh, basically they found no, no deficiencies. They did make a few recommendations, okay? There's, uh, no distribution deficiencies found. But, uh, the mandated bilateral agreement, we've already discussed that. July 6th was when the deadline was, but we've got letter in for an extension. Okay. They think that we have too much storage for the amount of water that we use every day. They wanted to know if we could do away with the stand pipe out there on 61. Well, we've, we've done a study on that and there's no way we can do without that because we would reduce fire flow. So we have to keep that in operation. Now, that's due for inspection this year, okay? Every five years they have to be inspected. And so I made arrangements to have with Missouri Engineering that when they do the sewer inspection, they'll only prove the two stand pipes both are controlled so that the city won't have to put out any extra money for the inspection. The federal government will pay for having them inspected. So that's the arrangements that I've made now. It may change between now and then, I don't know, but that's, that's what we did. Okay. And basically that was about it. They did say that we might have a problem with keeping a constant residual in the system because we have so much storage. But, uh, we always had that anyway, so we, we, we can, we can make that work. All right. The generator, transfer switch is here, but installation is not complete. Transfer switch is on the wall, but they haven't wired anything up yet. Okay. Uh, we've got the number one rotor, brand new, running. We're going to keep it running for a little while, see how it works. Empty out the oil and check it for, uh, shavings, no shavings or anything taken from it. But right now it's real quiet, runs real good. Monday, they intend to start working on number two. That's the other rotor on the other side. And that'll all be brand new, okay? Uh, tomorrow, they're supposed to come and run the conduit from the outside of the building to the generator to the distribution box inside, okay? But they have to do that at a pretty good average as far as electricians are concerned. Like, boy, it's got service calls and stuff like that. They, they come down there and start our project. Next thing you know, they call out, we go somewhere else. Okay. But everything, I tried to raise to that, everything should be done by August first. That's the plan date. It doesn't mean that, that's set in stone, okay? We plan to try to have everything done by August first. Okay. We have to see service calls. Uh, Joe already told you about the question tomorrow. Uh, we thought we might have to go out the piping, going back to the new, new sludge then. But Carl was down there tonight with, uh, Charlie, and I got to give him credit. He got that valve open between the old, old digester and the piping that goes to the back and closed just fine. So it works real good. We, now, it ain't the guy's fault because we thought it might be a butterfly valve because it's a sewer valve. And usually sewer valves are butterfly valves. It's only have to be open a quarter of a way, okay? But it happens to be a six-inch gate valve. So Carl had it go and open it up all the way and now it's emptying out like it should with the tough stopping valve. So, uh, there, there, we won't have to replace those valves in the back and then we don't have to go to root it out the pipe. So it's not plugged up. So that's a big headache off of my service. Uh, as you know, Charlie from the mayor sent a letter to DNR on how we haven't had good samples for nine months and, uh, no, uh, no bad ones, okay? Well, DNR came down yesterday, okay? And took seven samples, okay? And we took four before they did, okay? Our four samples come back good, but five of their routine samples came back to dead. So then we back on Monday and we got to take 13 samples, three samples for every dead one. So it'll be 13, 14 samples that we have to take to retest, okay? Now, it was raining. Uh, taking samples in the rain is a very bad idea. And it could be a possibility that it's approved with rain. And then again, there could be something, you know, I, I can't honestly tell you one way or another. All I know is that four hours after we took our samples, they took theirs. Ours was good and theirs was bad. So I don't know what, what that indicates or anything. I can't see being contaminated in pipes in four hours, the whole system, okay? I can't see that, you know, but who knows? And that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. What do you want to add?
You got to see it when you make the DNR magazine, sure you got that Giddy, wouldn't you?
I'll do that. Well, you have to.
That's my opinion, you got it.
That's right. That's what you.
I gave it as my opinion.
Okay. Um, I have a couple things that if I could ask, and about them.
I don't know. Ask me and I'll, I'm over.
Okay.
And I'll see if it ends in what I answered on the should be answer.
Okay. Well, that shouldn't be. But anyway, last month I asked about special samples because I was trying to understand what a special sample was. Well, and the DNR website, we have interior, they have 92 special samples. They don't have, but he said, you know, till last month that, that he had all this listed somewhere. Um, and, but there was, I, they sent me, forgot my answer, so that you know, they sent me documentation of the regulations, they're going to be samples. Yes, and I'm sure Dennis knows, we never told him to take them. And, but I, I'm questioning whether we actually qualified to have special samples taken because of that. So.
You can't, you can't.
I can answer it for us. Special samples are taken when we do work on line and before we put that line back in service, special samples have to be taken and they have to pass, you know, to put that line back in service. The other, other reason for a special sample is if an operator on his own conscience feels that there might be a problem somewhere, okay? And he's investigating it, okay? He will take a special sample. And if that comes back good, okay. If it doesn't, then it takes more, okay? Routine samples are taken twice a month in, in our, according to our compliance, okay? Anything else that we take is on us because we want to see if there is a problem. If we figure there might be a problem, we're going to take a special sample. And that's legal.
I'm a bit of a generation that I got.
It is perfectly legal.
It's on oil order, if we have oil order, or if you're putting in new lines, you don't ever have to water front.
No, but.
I take a special every week just because the mayor wants it up there at the interconnection, okay? If the mayor orders it, it is the, okay?
We're going to continue taking.
Because we might, we want to check and see, uh, if there's going to be a problem before there is a problem.
Well, you, you had mentioned to me that you were worried about floodwater getting into the, seeping into the.
Down there on the list, yes. That's why we took a special sample down there.
But aren't our lines in our, what, sealed system?
Yes, and it is.
Under high pressure?
Yes, and it is. And it should not have happened, okay? And it didn't. They were good.
Hold on.
But I took a special sample to find out.
Hold on a second. I'm going to ask you this. What is your problem with specials? What are they hurting? We're trying to find out that we got contamination. That's what we're all about. You, you argued one way about contamination. Now you argue because we run a special now and then to find out, to make sure our system's safe. We're trying to get out of poisoning. We run samples everywhere. We're trying to get out of poisoning because we got good samples. What is your problem with special samples?
The, the samples, they're not, the samples are not being, there are not that many samples being taken. They're being taken, I was thinking there were two taken, they're, they're taken in value pit, they're taken from one, one or two places in town. There's not, it's, it's not a variety of.
It's a random haul. It's a random haul. He can do whatever he wants to. He, if he needs, yeah, when we're running a random test, it makes no difference. We're just trying to keep up, except for here, the contamination. Because when we get contaminated, we're hurting. That's all we got. Two, three hundred thousand dollars worth of water we contaminated. We need to get up on it.
Well, I'm not, I, I feel like I'm not getting it right here.
I know what's great, you, well, we can run specials next week. Ten different places if we feel that we got the need to. Why would you have a problem with that if, because what do you think, we would be high in my run of specials? What, why is there a problem with running specials? Clyde, you been on water, Harvey, you tell me, did you ever run a special?
Yes, I have.
And the specials are, you're doing that so that you don't end up going against who you?
If we got a fabric back then, we would run one fourth of the time. We were running a resident team. If one special come back fast, we were strapped with it. They would leave me in a dent.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. The way I did it, if I worked on lines somewhere, even no matter how small, I was running a sound in that location just to make sure that no container's got anything. And that, that's all it was. I didn't have to, there's, there's certain things, time you don't have to take that stuff all the day. But that's the system. And this was the special, though. They're just thinking about, according to me, it's better to take that time and find out now instead of waiting. It's two weeks down the road, need a problem all over yourself. But, you know, there's nothing really wrong with what's, what you're doing. In fact, it's a good thing.
I was the same, you know, as I keep hearing all the time, well, the rules, the rules, the rules. I hear from the mayor, come to me, you have to follow the rules, you follow the rules, but you're not following the rules. And it's being our rules. In fact, when I talked to that lady, she, she couldn't believe how many special samples, why are they not just taken, and to avoid being out of compliance, what it looks like.
The, the one, the, the whole state, we take version of, model. Okay, that we have to stay compliant. These numbers have nothing to do with compliance, it's just checking the system.
So, that's what the specials are for.
Yeah.
Here, just, having, uh, issues with compliance. So, it looks like it is, what it looks like is that we're taking all these specials so that, you know...
We're good. Got everybody?
Yeah.
Everybody to speak. I have received a letter of recognition from our clerk. He has, uh, uh, I'm the board, that, uh, they're gonna accept our recognition, we are, make a motion right now to accept it, and move on to the next one.
I'd like to vote with, with just a little bit.
I'd say with it.
Okay, may I say it all, babe?
Aye.
Vote. Now, I only believe they're getting their own, it would take very short time, very, very short time. We can't get it done, it's too long. The pride is, we're gonna do our dedication of search and pain, and try to get something to start tomorrow. Go answer the brief, the city, and work with it, and try to use the interview, we had that interview with some of them. So, with that, I have no more to say.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the chairman...
Okay, may I say it all, babe?
Aye.
Vote. Thank you.